Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education for August 17, 2011 will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, free, open, and just as we are.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. Antillis.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 12, 2011, 1 at all schools, 2 home news Tribune, 3 Cranberry Press, and 4 filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, number 5 on the agenda, we will have a presentation on the solar power for the new Monroe Township High School by Design Ideas Group. Jerry Tagg.
Good evening. Jerry Tagg from the Board of Education. I'd ask that members of the Board step out into the audience if you would please. There's going to be a PowerPoint presentation.
At the July Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Meeting, we presented to the committee members at their request options for installing solar panels at the new Monroe Township High School with some of the remaining construction funds. Since that time, we've worked with Design Ideas Group, who's the architect for the new high school, and they brought in a consulting mechanical engineer, Barnacle Engineering. And there's going to be a presentation tonight. Just to give you a little background, Barnacle Engineering is the mechanical design engineer for Oak Tree School, and they designed the solar system that is in place at that location. So this evening, the presentation will be by Rich Alderiso, Principal with the firm of Design Ideas Group, and Steve Langen, Principal with the firm of Barnacle Engineering. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening. I'm Rich Alderiso from Design Ideas Group. As Jerry said, this is Steve Langen from Barnacle Engineering. We're here to just give you a little background on solar systems, on the options that exist regarding funding of the systems, how the system could be integrated into and onto the new high school, and basically, we'll go through, I think, a pretty comprehensive presentation. If you have questions, if you could, hold them to the end, because there's a good chance Steve might get to a question through his presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Steve now, who will give you some of the background information on solar, along with, again, the many potential benefits that come along with it. Steve?
Thank you, Rich. My name is Steve Langen. I am a principal at Barnacle Engineering. We're mechanical and electrical engineers. Tonight, we're going to discuss solar, photovoltaic solar systems in general, and in specific, a possible system over at the new high school. As everyone is aware of, the high school has been recently completed, and it's set for occupancy this fall. Fortunately, the project, through a lot of hard work by a lot of good people, came in under budget, so there are monies that were in the original budget that are available to be spent. There are a number of options as to how to spend this money. We were asked, in particular, to look at the photovoltaic, which I'm going to be calling PV system in particular. Other projects that could have been considered are wind projects, or biomass boiler projects. We were asked to take a look at the PV system in particular, because it's, the possibility is that it's the best fit for the school the way it sits now. One of the considerations in how to spend the excess money is, is there a possibility that a project could be put together where a potential revenue stream would be generated? Instead of spending money on a capital project where the value of the project is highest when it's first put in, and the value of it goes down over the years as the equipment is being used, the photovoltaic project in particular is a moneymaker, and it will generate money rather than just lose value over time. As I stated, out of the possible projects that could be considered, we believe at this time that the PV system is the best choice for the school at this time. What is a PV system? Most people have at least a general idea of what a photovoltaic system is. Essentially, it's a gathering of components whose purpose is to gather energy that's generated by the sun and converted into usable electricity. In order to do that, there are a number of pieces that need to be put together. The, probably the most basic piece, the piece that most people are familiar with, is the panel. It's also called a module. It's consisting of a mono or multi-crystalline silicon structure. These are made into solar cells. The cells are put together into these panels, which are what you're looking at on the slide here. A lot of people, even if they haven't seen them in buildings, you'll see a lot of these now on utility poles as you drive up and down the highways. The utility companies are paying contractors to put these on individual utility poles to gather energy and inject it directly into the transmission lines that you're passing on the roads. Solar panels is an individual module, which you're looking at in the picture. An array is simply a collection of these modules. They are put together in groups usually ranging from 10 to 15. So 10 or 15 of these panels that are put together are called an array. Right now, the industry standard for a monocrystalline silicon module is 240 watts. Each one of these panels that are typically specified now for large buildings and large projects such as the high school, the size of the modules are 240 watts. This has been a significant increase. When we first started doing these projects about five years ago, the modules were only gathering about 190 watts for each one of these modules that you're looking at. So through the increase in efficiency, we've been able to keep the same general size of modules and increase the amount of electricity that can be produced by each module. These modules need to be mounted together. For the high school, we're looking at just an installation on the roof. There are other options. They can, we can put these modules directly on the ground. We can build parking canopies and put these modules on the canopy. But typically, the most cost-efficient manner of putting in a PV system is to mount them on a roof. What you're looking at there in the picture is a ballast-type rack. What this means is that the rack that supports the module is placed directly on the roof, and rather than physically attaching the module to the roof, what is done is that a large weight is placed on the rack, and this acts as a ballast or an anchor. The racks are engineered such that they can withstand a very high wind without being blown off the roof. And in fact, the modules that are installed in the majority of systems in New Jersey are about a 10-degree mounting angle. Typically, the optimum mounting angle for these modules matches the latitude of the location that you are on the planet Earth. Here in New Jersey, we're around 40 degrees, 41 degrees. That's the latitude that our location is. Unfortunately, as the angle increases, as we go from a 10-degree mounting angle, which is common here, if we try to adjust that angle so that it better matches the latitude of our position so that we are more directly facing the sun, it becomes an issue with the wind. Because as these modules stick up higher and higher, they present more area for the wind to get a hold of and possibly blow it off the roof. So that's why most of the roof-mounted PV racks that you see in New Jersey are at 10 degrees or relatively close to that. One of the disadvantages of a solar system is that the sun is not extremely intense. It is putting out energy. It's constantly putting out energy in units called photons. Unfortunately, it's not a dense source of energy. So in order to gather a usable amount of these photons and convert it into electricity, we need to present a fairly large amount of PV modules to the sun. These PV modules make electricity in direct current, which is very inefficient. When Thomas Edison was inventing the light bulb, he was working with DC power, but it proved to be so efficient that when Westinghouse invented AC power, all the electrical equipment was designed towards that, because it's much more efficient to move electricity in AC, in the AC form of power rather than the DC form of power. In order to most efficiently move electricity in DC power, what we do is we take all these modules and we combine their generating capacity through these combiner boxes. So these combiner boxes are wired to these different arrays, and we're taking all the energy that these arrays are producing, and we're combining them so that the DC power is as high as it possibly can be, so we can move the electricity more efficiently through our system. And that's recap of what I said. We're gathering DC power from all these different locations. We're combining them together. We're trying to get the DC level as high as possible, because it's the most efficient way to transport the power. Once we have combined all these DC arrays, we need to get the power from DC into the AC form, because that's what our electrical equipment wants to see in our residences and in our schools. So the combiner boxes take all this power, they move it to the inverters. The inverters are just essentially transformers that take the DC form of electrical power and they transform it into AC. The AC power, once it's transformed at the inverter, we inject that into our building electrical distribution system. Typically, this is at the service, so we've taken the AC power, that the inverter is created from the DC power, that the modules have gathered, and we're injecting it into our building system. Essentially, what's happening is the building system is taking that electricity that we're generating, it's pulling it into this, in this case, the school, and it's making use out of it. These systems will not generate enough power to take care of all of the building's needs, but depending on the overall size of the system, it can be very significant. There will be occasions when the system will produce more electricity than the building's actually using, such as, for instance, in the high school during the weekend, say, or during the week over the summer period. If the system is large enough, it will generate more power than what the building is using. That excess power is sold back to the utility company. The state of New Jersey has put laws in place that require the utility companies to purchase excess power from systems like this, and they purchase it at the same price as you would pay for it when you purchased the electricity from the utility. That's pretty much the overall view. Those are the major components of a PV system. We're next going to discuss some of the financial considerations on how PV projects are financed. The most simple way is direct ownership. If the owner has, the building owner has enough cash, he can pay cash for it. He can provide money through bank loans. The key being here is that the owner is just that, all of the equipment that makes up the photovoltaic system, all that equipment is owned by the building owner. Another possibility is a lease. It's very similar to a car lease. The owner works through a contractor or a vendor and leases the photovoltaic equipment. The trick is to be able to generate more revenue than what you're paying for the lease of the equipment. And the further extension of that is a lease buyback. Again, it's similar to what you do with a car. At the end of the lease, for a predetermined fee that's negotiated at the beginning of the lease, the owner can buy the system off of the contractor or the vendor, take it over, and he owns it. And another possible means of financing is a PPA, a Power Purchase Agreement. What that typically consists of is that the vendor or the contractor owns the equipment that's installed at the site, or in this case, at the high school, and the owner negotiates a fixed or a ramped cost for electricity. So what this allows the owner to do is to come to an agreement to pay a known amount for the cost of electricity, which is lower than the going rate, and he locks in that differential for the life of the agreement. So if the utility, say, at the beginning of the PPA, the utility is charging 15 cents for a kilowatt hour, then the PPA would allow the building owner to purchase electricity from him for, say, 10 cents a kilowatt hour. And that type of differential is held throughout the life of the agreement. Once the system is in place, the way the laws are structured in New Jersey right now, there are two ways that a photovoltaic system generates money. One way is through net metering, and the other one is through SREC. The net metering, I touched on briefly. What that is, is any excess electricity that is generated by the system has to be brought back by the utility for the same price that the utility is selling electricity. At the same token, the energy that's being generated by the system and is being made use of by the building, that money is, the money is offset from what would have been purchased from the utility. So if I'm making 10 kilowatt hours worth of electricity with my system, that's 10 kilowatt hours less of electricity than I need to buy from the utility company. So that's what, the net metering is simply the accounting of the amount of electricity that's being generated by the photovoltaic system versus the amount of electricity that's being utilized by the building. The SRECs are energy credits. This is a system that was put in place with the utility companies. The utility companies are required to produce a certain amount of green energy over a given year. They can either produce that energy by building their own systems, they can build their own wind-generating systems, their own photovoltaic systems, or they can purchase that same green energy from private users, like the high school in this instance would be a private user. So these SRECs are floating amounts. There's a market where the SRECs are bought and sold, and it can be, they can generate a substantial amount of money. The larger the system, the more SRECs are available for selling on the SREC market. Another thing I just wanted to touch on is right now, in the state of New Jersey, the cost of electricity is static. It remains the same whether it's day or night. That's probably not going to last a whole lot longer. In California right now, for instance, there's a differential in price. You can buy electricity cheaper at night than you can during the day. The issue is that the distribution system, those power poles that you see, a lot of those are reaching or have reached their maximum capacity. So in order to discourage use during the day and encourage use during the night, the utility in California is charging a premium, and it's most likely that that type of thinking is going to spread, and the people that are aware of that and plan for that now will be at an advantage. We were asked to put together some numbers based on a sample project. We're hoping that we're going to be given the okay to do a complete study. What we're going to do now is produce numbers on a hypothetical, for instance, type of a deal. What really needs to be done is we need to do, you know, a complete and thorough study, make sure these numbers are working correctly for the possible high school project. When we took a look at the high school, there were a number of areas that are open and are very conducive for the installation of large amounts of these modules. The areas we looked at, for instance, were the auditorium and the gymnasium. So when we took a quick look at the school, we based our numbers on these large, open areas, and we calculated that they would be able to generate 454 KW worth of energy. Based on the latest data that we had as far as the cost for photovoltaic systems, that sized system would cost approximately $2.85 million. That's an inclusive number of all costs, not only of the equipment and the installation of the equipment. It also took into consideration design fees, legal fees, advertising, that type of thing. Based on that sized system, calculating the energy generated and the SRECs being sold on the SREC market, that system would today produce revenues of $381,000 per year. So using simple payback techniques, if our system costs $2.85 million and it generates $381,000 worth of revenues during a year, it would pay itself back completely in about seven and a half years. The typical lifespan of a PV system is 20 to 25 years. That number comes from the warranty that most manufacturers will provide for the photovoltaic modules. They will actually last longer than that. What happens is, once you get beyond that point, there becomes deterioration of the efficiency of the system, so that when engineers do analyses, they're looking at 20 to 25 years. That's what the peak production of the system. We were asked to put together a project schedule. If we were to move forward with the design tomorrow, we estimate approximately three months for the complete engineering design. We would begin the bidding process around the middle of November, allow a couple of months for the bidding and contract award. So we were projecting a contract award at January 8. We're allowing six months for the construction period. That's a fairly conservative number. It depends on a number of things. One of the things that we found out is driving construction schedules or the availability of these PV modules. PV is, it's a worldwide phenomenon. A lot of countries, like Germany, for instance, they are producing tremendous numbers of PV systems. So there are, from time to time, shortages of the PV modules. So we've allowed some time in case there is a shortage for recovery. Once we get closer to these dates, we'd be able to adjust the schedule accordingly. And using those projections, we're thinking that worst-case scenario, we'd be operational in generating electricity by September of 2012. I just wanted to conclude with a couple of other benefits. You know, money is important, but it's not the only thing that can be taken into consideration. This particular slide is taken from the program that's being run over at the Oak Tree Elementary School. This particular slide is showing a snapshot in time of the different parameters of that system, how much energy is being produced. It converts the production of energy into some green milestones. It tells you how much, for instance, how much CO2 is avoided when you produce electricity through photovoltaic systems rather than through typical oil-based electrical production. Another thing that can be done, and is done in numerous instances for school projects, is the data that is generated by the software that we're looking at here can be used for different programs. Some of the information is used for science programs. It can be used for math. There's a number of things that can be done with it. One of the side benefits is the areas that are covered on the roof by these modules. They're protected by these modules from the ultraviolet rays that the sun produces, which are very damaging to all kinds of materials. So they do provide a small degree of protection. Another benefit is, these modules, when they're put on the roof, they're shielding the roof from the direct rays of the sun. The direct rays of the sun generate heat on the roof, which is transmitted into the building. So any areas that are shielded by these PV modules help keep that area of the building just a little bit cooler. And lastly, again, the beneficial trade-offs for the photovoltaic systems versus oil-based systems, you know, we're keeping, we're preventing some production of CO2 and other pollutants. And that's all I have. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You mentioned the figure. I know that a private homeowner goes with a solar system. There are block rebates or grants that come from the federal government. Are we entitled to any federal money or grant money?
There are a number of different programs. One of the disadvantages that a school district has is it's a public entity, so a lot of the tax benefits that are available to private residences or to private industry, the public sector doesn't qualify for.
Maybe the board can go back to their seats and ask questions.
While they're in transit, let me ask one question. You didn't present anything on the other financing models. You only presented information on the direct voltage model.
Yes.
Tell us about any other.
Well, we were planning to cover the other models when we did our report. We were asked to put together a, for instance, example, which is what we did, but once we're released to do a full study, then we'll look at those other financing models. released to do a full study, then we'll look at those other financing models. Yes.
Has the structural engineer signed off on this?
No, that would be covered when we did the report.
Well, I think you can get that information ahead of the report, because if it's not structurally feasible, there's no reason to do the report.
Right, for a brand-new structure like this, we've never run across an instance where that has become a problem?
Always must have.
Yes, we must.
There's no recommendation at this point, we're just presenting information. There's still a committee structure that this project would need to go through, it's gone through buildings and grounds, but it would still need to go through the finance committee before we made a formal recommendation to the board. So this was just information that we wanted to provide to the board at the B&amp;G BG&amp;T committee request.
Okay, anyone from the public too wishing to speak, please give your name and address for the record.
I apologize, I was remiss in mentioning that before Steve put together his presentation, I did touch base with the structural engineer who designed the structure for the spaces that we're concerned with here, and he did confirm that a system of this type could be supported by the roof and roof structure that exists today without further modification.
Hey, no, I'm going to open it up to the board for questions and comments first before, and then we'll go to the public forum and you'll have an opportunity. Is there anybody on the board who would like to make a comment or have a question? Mr. Kline?
Above and beyond your presentation, Middlesex County is working with a development company who will install solar systems and, at no cost, to the board or the district, and we would purchase the electricity that's generated by the solar panels for quite a bit less than what we're paying now. If there's a shortfall in what the system produces, then we would do, just purchase the rest from either Jersey City Power and Light or whoever we're using now. What Middlesex County is allowing, is they're allowing the company to do a survey of each facility at the cost of $1,000, of which $500 is picked up by the county. So this is another avenue that we can look at as compared to putting in our own system. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Mr. Tesler?
Thank you. Yeah, so I've actually been researching this personally myself, because a couple of my friends of mine did this on their homes. Seven and a half year return on investment, it seems like about the average for that. And I'm just an advocate, just my point of view for the Buildings and Grounds Committee of paying everything in cash, so if we do have a cash, I would like to see us go that route if that's the decision of Buildings and Grounds Committee to present to the full board. Also, eventually I would like to see things like this, proposals like this on the remaining schools, even if the, however the money comes, little by little, if we have to save it over the years in a capital fund or even a bond referendum, because putting solar panels on schools and generating our own electricity, you know, even if it's a five to seven-year return on investment after that, it's all profit and will save us money in the long run.
Mr. Leary?
First and foremost, was this in the bill of material? First and foremost, was this in the bill of material for the original referendum? Why are we even talking about it?
Requesting by the Buildings and Grounds Transportation Committee to restore the option.
But you're going beyond your scope of work.
Mr. Korski?
Mr. Leary, it's my understanding that the original bond referendum, the first 2002 that was defeated, did have solar energy components in that project.
And it was defeated?
Which were subsequent.
Mildly defeated.
Yes, that's correct.
So I think that we have an obligation to the taxpayers to respect the bill of And if the bond council wants to come before this board and talk to the citizens, fine, but just a couple of casual telephone calls, that doesn't cut the mustard.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I just have, I guess, a question about the materials. You said that there's about a 20 to 25-year warranty on the panels themselves, so what type of things would need maintenance beyond, you know, the 25 years? Because I would think that, you know, if they need to be replaced every, you know, couple of years, then the warranty covers it, so it's going to be free of charge. What kind of other operational costs might we see from the system?
Well, there are actually very few. There are essentially no moving parts on the system other than the electrons moving up and down the wire. Some districts will actually go up on the roof and clean the modules. They are, market is being self-cleaning, I mean, they're made of a material that is restrictive of the amount of dirt that it holds. As far as the equipment itself, wherever there are electrical connections periodically, you'll need to review them and make sure that they have remained tight, but that's, you know, it's part of a routine maintenance program, it doesn't take very long. So to answer your question, there are components in the system that would have to be reviewed and verified as to they're, you know, remaining tight, but there aren't, you know, moving parts such as in most mechanical systems, which need filters or fluids or that type of thing. There's none of that in these systems, it's a static system.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, there's very little.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'm sorry. If I'm understanding you correctly, then there's very little risk with the investment over the time of the warrant, even just the warranty period, as an owner of the materials, where if we look at some of the other options for leasing and stuff like that, you do that because you may be deferring some of the maintenance cost over to the one who owns the stuff.
Right.
I'm guessing, I'm hearing from you, because there's very little moving parts, there's very little, in effect, overhead, if you can afford it and the money is there, it's kind of a no-brainer why you wouldn't want to own it and then have complete control of being able to reap three times your investment over that 20-something years, which would be great money to be able to return back to the community over the lifespan of the investment, as far as I'm concerned.
Absolutely. The preferred models, ownership, these other programs are, you know, come into play when the owner does not have money. They represent ways of gaining benefit of the system without having to front money.
Okay, anyone else on the board? Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, thank you. One of the things coming from the Buildings, Grounds and Transportation Committee, one of the reasons that we wanted to see this presentation today was because we wanted to look at some options that would strengthen the district and maybe also offer us an opportunity to, for some gains, you know, financial gains from the system. Because, you know, these systems, once, like you were saying earlier, once during the summer, weekends, when school's out, they can generate enough electricity to spin the meter backward, which would save the district money eventually. So with oil prices going up and all the things that we're seeing from an economic standpoint, we just were looking at this system and looking at this avenue as a way to maybe help the district eventually free itself from some of the burdens of having to use, you know, beyond the grid, oil, gas, those kind of things. So I just want to explain why we asked for this presentation today.
And for everyone's information, the new high school consumes about $1 million worth of energy annually, so this could be, could generate a cost savings to the district in the future. And probably anything that we could save money on and generate money in the future is something we should be looking at.
Mr. Leary? Mr. Leary?
This is another example of organizational disarray. Buildings and Grounds is talking about finance, but never comes to finance. Let's get our act together before we go present things to the public that may be ultra-viruses acts. Now leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your presentation. This time we will continue with our agenda. Number six will be discussed because it is listed twice on the agenda, so it will be discussed as indicated under number 13, the closed session. So at this time, we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to come up and speak to the agenda, please state your name and address for the record.
I'd like to know if it'd be possible to have some feedback as to what the experience to date is with the Oak Tree solar panels. I appreciate that it's much smaller in scale, but it should be giving us some feedback from our own experience without looking to theoretical.
Jerry, do we have that information now?
Yes, Jerry Tagg. We have a 50.4 KW system at Oak Tree School installed in 2008. We've been generating SRECs on that project and realizing, on average, about $3600 to $3800 per month in income from the sale of the SRECs. Up until June of this year, the SRECs came through at $640 per SREC is what we are getting. We saw a fall-off in July down to $550 per SREC. And the calculation that Mr. Langen did, I believe he used $500, a conservative number, $500 per, he used $550, okay. System at Oak Tree has required no maintenance, has been operating since day one and has been making the district money. In addition to the SRECs, obviously, the energy that is produced every day is helping to lower the cost of the electric bill to the school.
Thank you. Anyone else on the public?
Shell Arminio 9, Nathaniel Street. In terms of the system on Oak Tree, is that owned by the Board of Education? So it was installed during construction and is owned by the Board of Education?
Mr. Korski?
Yes, that's correct.
So we expect it to pay, do you have an idea when it will be paying for itself?
Something about that seven-year time.
So it's around the same?
Yes.
So we actually have a study in play in the board that is going to inform the rest of the board on that, on another system, I would imagine. So do we have to pay for a study?
Well, that's something that's going to go to the Finance Committee to discuss.
Okay, well, maybe the Finance Committee could sort of just take a look at the actual project that's already available to us and we won't have to pay for a study.
We'll bring all that information to the Finance Committee.
Okay. I respect Mr. Tesler's perspective, I think it's important that we own our system, especially since it may be lucrative enough for other people to want to get involved and for us to, you know, have, pay for it. I mean, it would be, it seems really reasonable for us to have our own system and pay for it, just like you, you know, we're not renting schools, we're not renting the land, we're not renting the building, we're renting the school, you know, we own it. So I would imagine that the solar panels would do the same for us. Also, does the metal roof affect the efficacy, the metal roof on the high school, does it affect the efficacy of the panels? I'd imagine that generates a lot more heat than a regular roof would. Mr. Tagg? Do you?
The roof sections that we were looking at to implement the system are a different material. They wouldn't go on the metal roof system, they'd go on the flat system, which is a modified bitumen roof, it's an asphalt-type material. You wouldn't see the panels, they'd be concealed behind the exterior walls of the building, and they wouldn't be affected by the material.
So the panels aren't, right, the panels can handle it?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I think we're, we should speak to the project if it is cost-effective. It sounds like a cost-effective project, doesn't sound like something that you're going to buy and then it's going to deteriorate in value as it goes on. It sounds like it's going to be a good moneymaker. So I don't want to point out, but one of the board members mentioned that they were concerned about financing and it should have been discussed sooner, but if we were so concerned about financing, I think we might have wanted to take it up last month when you found almost $3 million in the budget. What, $900 million from, $900,000 from the state and another $2 million? So, I mean, you know, this is, that's the kind of money that maybe we could have used toward a project like this instead of some other things that I know members of the public objected to. And Mr. Leary talks about bringing the public in to have a discussion, there's been, very rarely has, he in particular, listened to what the public's concerns are, so I think it's something that might be cost-effective. My last statement is, I believe you mentioned that when you go into a closed session, you're going to be discussing the naming of the new Monroe Township High School Performing Arts Center, is that correct?
It's up for discussion, yes.
In the closed session?
Yes.
It's, why would it be in closed session? It's not, it's not anything that has to do with salaries or anything private, why can't it be discussed in public? Shouldn't be at a closed-session item, I don't think the resolution would hold muster in the Open Public Meetings Act.
I believe we had discussed putting it under closed session so that the board could have the opportunity of debating the issue before we brought it to the public.
I don't think that's, that will go through, the Open Public Meetings Act says that closed-session items are specific. I don't think your resolution will hold up. So I would recommend that rather than get a, you know, get a letter from an open government situation or a lawyer, that you might want to have that discussion in public, there's no reason for it to be private.
Thank you, we'll take that into consideration.
Well, can I get an answer whether you're going to?
We could discuss it under other board business.
So it will be discussed in public today?
We will discuss it in public today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think it should be noted.
Mr. Leary, we're in a public forum.
I make this a matter of privilege, that several years ago, we had attorneys here for a long, long time, and then they were removed. I think we should have attorneys at all of our board meetings, and so when situations like this crop up, we can have an effective legal opinion rather than conjecture.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Andrea Ryan, 5 Regent Drive here in Monroe. It's great to see everybody, I hope you're all having a wonderful summer. I'll try and be brief. It's, well, John, I have to agree with you about having an attorney here, I do agree with that. Well, I'm here tonight as a member of Kids First and representing Kids First, saying such a long and winding road as it has been, even before this current high school that we have, that is so beautiful right now, but dating back to the first referendum. And I'm so happy for next month to the opening of the new school, and my son being the first freshman class in there. So thank you to all of you and the collective efforts of the community, which brings me to the point of why I'm here representing Kids First. Sadly, Jackie couldn't be here tonight, Jackie Winters, there was a passing that she had to go to the services this evening, but I do speak on behalf of her and the rest of the group, that we would like to recommend at this time, the naming of the Performing Arts Center being named after Dr. Ferry. We strongly recommend this, under his great guidance, he's brought us all together, we all worked together with him for the same effort, for the children. He worked very unselfishly, selfishlessly, thank you. He stayed on path, he was unwavered, and he stayed true to the course and true to the code of the children. Under his direction, we all, like I said, pulled together, whether you were an empty nester, whether you have children like myself, or whether you were at the PRCs, everybody gathered together for this school and for this community. And today, when I drive past that school, I can't tell you what pride I have, how happy I am, and how happy I am to move forward and work with the board, work with Dr. Hamilton and everybody, but I really think the kudos goes to the community and to Dr. Ralph Ferry. And again, I would like to recommend, on behalf of Kids First, and I know some other community members, that the Performing Arts Center be named for him. We have been sending letters, I don't know if you guys have gotten them though, I know you've been having a problem with your computers, but we do recommend that. I don't know what else to say, but a lot of pride and a lot of thanks to all of you and everybody. and everybody in this room, and a lot of people that couldn't attend tonight. Thank you very much. It's been a joy working on it for over 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Doug Poit, four Tamarack Road. Excuse me. I would like, after I'm finished with my questions, I would like some further clarification on the point of using any surplus funds from the building referendum, because I know by state law, if a project comes in under the amount that was originally approved by the public, then those funds are supposed to be returned to the taxpayers. And I can just tell you that the way it looks, from a public perspective, at least from my perspective, it looks as if the board is attempting to spend every dollar they can get their hands on without consideration for relief to the local property taxpayers. So I would like some further elaboration on whether... Of why this is legal to consider this particular project as part of the referendum that was passed. The other question that I have is... It's a general question, I'm a little confused on it. Is the public, during the first public session, is the public allowed to ask questions on items that are in the agenda that are after that particular session?
Yes, yes, they are. They're allowed to speak to anything on the agenda.
Okay, because at last month's meeting, I was troubled by the fact that the board voted to restore the zero-period busing and yet continue to charge for the pay-to-play. I found that your logic on that was faulty, since the zero-period busing was added after athletics was always free to... Well, not free to the children, but supported completely by the Board of Education. I would have thought that you would have voted to maintain something that was longer in existence as opposed to something that was added later, the zero-period for busing, and yet the public did not... Well, I guess we had the opportunity, but we certainly didn't get a chance to have the input on that until the end of the meeting, which was at the second session, and that was after the resolution had already been voted on. So I was a little troubled by that, but you've clarified that point. The other question I have concerns the use of the funds for the laptops... Not the laptops, but the iPads.
iPads?
Yeah, the iPads. I do understand that if they are dropped, they break, and they're quite costly to repair. So my question is, how will that cost be taken care of? Because if you've got 1,600 of these things out there, and if kids are allowed to take these home, even if they have them in the building, there's a possibility that they're going to drop them, they're going to break. Will the children be required to pay for that themselves? Because that's a couple of hundred dollars, I think, just to replace that face. Will there be insurance to cover that? Thank you.
Okay. I will have Mr. Gorski talk to you about the surplus funds, and then I will have Dr. Gorman talk about the iPads.
Mr. Poit, there is adequate available surplus in the two-bond referendum accounts to finance the iPad matter and also tonight's proposal for solar panels. I have an opinion from our bond counselor, from Carter and English, that both are legal and clearly allowable under the question and taking into consideration the legalities of the specific question and tax consequences of such. This would be... The solar panels would be considered equipment under the referendum and would be certainly allowable, and I could furnish you with a copy of that opinion if you wish.
Dr. Gorman?
Regarding the iPads, first and foremost, we are putting... We're encasing them in a protective case, a very strong protective case. Not that that's foolproof, but we are doing everything we can to maintain the iPads to the best shape that they could be in. The other thing that we're proposing that'll be running through policy as well is a technology fee to the families, considering a $50 fee as a self-insurance policy. When we looked at insurance policies in general, they came in at about a million dollars. And so we're considering several options, either a no-insurance piece, a homeowner's piece, or a self-insurance protocol for the district to adopt as a one-time replacement. Through all my conversations with schools and states that have been implementing the iPads, the beauty of them is that there are no movable parts in them. So unlike a computer, there's nothing to really... They either work or they don't work. So we have an Apple Care policy embedded in the price as well, but if there's something above and beyond, then we have options that parents can choose to use to as a one-time replacement fee. But eventually, the onus would be just like a textbook being mishandled or misused, even though it's a little bit... It's more money. It would... The onus would go back, you know, to the family. But we do want to put in a place where we could support that piece. From my feedback, doing all the research over the last several months, they've had very little incidence of breakage. But we do have a big population, so I think that will be part of it, and I think we're putting in protocol and procedures to hopefully handle that. And today, at curriculum, we talked about the what-ifs, and I think there's going to be a lot of what-ifs. I think with anything of this magnitude, we're going to have situations, well, what if this happens? What if that happens? And the best thing we could do is really have a very strong acceptable use policy, do a very thorough job in communicating. What they've found, and what I believe is the best insurance, is the kids valuing those devices because it's important to them, it's meaningful to them, they're engaged using them, so they take good care of them. And that won't happen overnight, but hopefully, with the level of professional development and instruction and support that we're providing, it will become a very valuable tool for kids that they will be very dear and near to. And I know when things are important to people, they do a better job of taking care of it. So I don't have an answer that's going to, you know, solve every piece, but we do have contact with neighboring schools in other states, and we've looked at all the best practices that are out there, and we're trying to find out what's going to work best for Monroe Township.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Ms. Kolepanovic, can I just-
Mr. Chiro?
Yeah, I just want to address Mr. Poit's question, but I just want to clarify something because I'm hearing a lot of feedback from the public, even from the newspapers, the way they, you know, the way they wrote some of the articles, and they had some of the headlines that stated, you know, that we bought iPads for the students. iPads were a part of the whole technology package, they weren't the only thing that we bought. You know, that was part of the technology package, along with computers and laptops and... And without that package, we weren't... We didn't have technology for the new high school. We waited until right before the high school opened so that we would have the most current technology. And then the curriculum committee, and then the board, the full board after, decided that this was the best way to go, and we have a mix of technology between iPads and laptops and regular computers. The other part, though, that I just want to bring up is that I agree with you on pay-to-participate. I think that the way that the recommendation was made to us was we were, you know, we were asked to vote on the... To just... To vote on the science program and then on zero-period busing. And then that's our fault that no one decided to amend or bring something else up. But I do agree with you that that is something that probably should be looked at, looked at fairly soon. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Robert Roach, 18 Northfield Boulevard. I'd like to know how much we are under budget on the construction of the high school?
Do you have that information? Mr. Gorski?
It's a dynamic figure. It's constantly changing with additions to the project and with some contingencies of significant nature that are still out there, such as reserves with contractors, affirmative action reserve. We still have a state grant receivable. It'd be difficult to give you a figure as of the moment. Our auditors are going through the accounts right now, and I could give you an exact audited figure as of June 30. That'll be a tangible figure as at a particular point in time, but I can strongly make the assertion that there is enough money in the reserves and in the fund balance to fund both of the projects that have been presented to the public.
What I'm interested in is are more than enough money? In other words, is there some money that's going to be excess that you're going to come up with more ideas to spend?
The answer to that is yes.
Approximately how much?
I don't feel comfortable giving that number out tonight. I have a range, but again, it's dependent upon some contingencies and variables and...
Well, why would this excess money be returned to the taxpayers?
It will, and that is as the law requires, which was mentioned before. But the projects that have been presented are allowable under the question, and it's the board's direction, if they so choose, to go ahead with either of those two projects. There still is ample monies remaining to return for tax relief. However, to satisfy the initial question, to outfit the school's technology needs in accordance with our vision, and to enhance the school and help subsidize, as Mrs. Kolepanovic mentioned, a million-dollar-a-year energy budget, and to try to become a little more energy-independent, some of these ideas make sense, and that's why we're bringing them up for discussion.
I agree that the PV system seems to make sense financially for the investment and the return, but I also know how this board deals, and any savings of 300-some thousand, taxpayers would never see. I think if you go... If you're going to go ahead and do this, there should be some mechanism put in place that the taxpayers see some benefit from it in reduction in their... In the taxes by the savings that are generated.
Okay, thank you. There are things that we are looking at, but it doesn't mean that we're going to end the taxpayers. So we're looking at everything before we make any major decisions.
I think... I just hope that you do consider the taxpayers at some point in your deliberations.
Mr. Gorski?
Mr. Roach, with Jerry Tagg's aggressive initiative to go to market and sell the solar renewable energy credits with the Oak Tree School, the district has recognized about $40,000 a year in energy savings from the sale of the SRECs, in addition to energy savings from rolling back the meter. Now, the rolling back the meter obviously saves on the electric budget in the school, and the solar renewable energy credits comes in as miscellaneous income, which also becomes excess surplus and generates future tax relief. So all of the savings that are... Would be or are being recognized by the solar energy projects would offset taxes.
Okay, that all comes in the miscellaneous income section.
Miscellaneous income or savings on energy costs, which are budgeted annually.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Shell Arminio nine Nathaniel Street, at Point of Order. I have a booklet here that discusses the Open Public Meetings Act, and it has the exception... It has the information regarding what is acceptable to go into closed session. So I'm going to pass one out to each of the board members. You don't need an attorney here, you need to have people know what the rules are, and the board needs to play by those rules. Thank you. I'll give you one out, and I think it would suggest in here that the discussion should be held in public.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we will close the public session, and we will go to the superintendent's report with Dr. Hamilton.
Before we move into the superintendent's report, I just want to share with you that we did have a meeting this week... Maybe it was last week, with state officials and state-level legislators regarding funding, state funding for Monroe Township, and I'm sure Mr. Leary will speak more to that during the committee report. I also want to give the board an update, and I asked Mr. Tagg to be prepared this evening to just share with the board our status report on the enormous transition plan that has been in place this summer. This has been a huge, huge project to make the transition happen in essentially an eight-week period of time, and I really have to personally thank Jerry Tagg for his leadership in indulging my neurotic behavior about making sure all of this happened in time for opening. Jerry?
Good evening, Jerry Tagg. Many things going on in the district this summer, as Dr. Hamilton mentioned. First off, the TCU's are the temporary classroom units. As everyone may recall, we have 89 temporary classroom units in the district, and this year, the board is releasing 18 of them. We will have TCU's remaining at Barclaybrook School. At the end of the 1960 wing, there'll be six classrooms there, and there will be one unit left at Applegarth School. So that leaves 71 TCU units that are being removed this summer. What makes it a little challenging is that we have three different contractors for all of those, so all of the trailers and systems are intertwined. Got off to a slow start with some of the contractors. We've had several of them removed. We are at a stalemate with one contractor, reported to the Building Grounds Committee last night that we may need to take some legal action with this contractor regarding removing the trailers. But if that contractor does not come and take the trailers, which would be a few here at the high school and a unit at Barclaybrook, it would not impede the opening of the school or affect the safe operation of the school. So again, we're proceeding with the temporary classroom units. Over at the new high school, construction is substantially complete, and contractors are working on punch list. We are waiting two final inspections over there, operating on a temporary certificate of occupancy. One is a final sidewalk inspection from Middlesex County. There's a four-foot section of sidewalk that goes to Thompson Park. Jim Lantino, the county planning inspector, is due out to inspect that and sign off on it. And then the plumbing inspector asked for some modifications to some floor drains in the food service kitchen, which we have a plumber on site right now who's making those modifications. That'll be signed off on on Monday. The board may recall that in June, we awarded a contract for the TV studio, so this summer, we have been working with the bidder, open systems integrators, with shop drilling and submittal review, and most of the stuff is in fabrication. There's not a lot of construction on-site with that, really, it's a lot of equipment that is being brought in. Ms. Miller's here, Mr. Hladick, they've been involved in some of the design as well, and although that won't be in place for the opening day of school, we do not feel that it will impact curriculum because it will follow shortly thereafter. Also, over at the high school, the industrial arts equipment, there's a back order on several pieces of equipment that they ordered. What we did with industrial arts is we took the shop equipment from the middle school, shop equipment from the existing high school, and actually, some of the pieces we had in the maintenance shop down at the board office, selected which pieces would go to the new high school, which pieces would come here, had a rigging contractor set those up. The program purchased several new pieces, table saw, for example, several other large pieces. The board awarded contracts for those. We've run into some problems. Mr. Miller has reported that the distributor for the equipment has gone into bankruptcy. So apparently, the order that Mr. Miller placed is stuck, kind of locked in on bankruptcy proceeding. So what we did with the local code inspectors is we reviewed those shops, and he agreed to close out the permits for the project, and then when that equipment arrives, we will reopen a new permit to connect the electric and duct connections for the HVAC and the dust collectors to the units. Also, over the high school, the furniture and move-in, we're about 90% complete with that. The move, which was district-wide, which encompassed every school in the district, a big piece, obviously, moving from old school to new school and out of the trailers, so everything with the moving contractor has been completed to the new school. Also, the furnishings are all in place at the new school. We're back ordering on just two areas, which would be the PE offices and the trainers' area. We anticipate having those items in by the second week of September. We're going to put some tables and some extra desks that we have in place to take care of those items, and then we'll be complete with all of the furniture. The other piece, which is a specialty move item, is the libraries. There are two components to the library move. There is moving Applegarth School to here, the new middle school, as well as moving the high school over. Part of that move involves integration of the collection from the middle school with some of what is being left behind by the high school, and then set up over there. That one, we're down to the wire on. That is scheduled to be August 30th through September 2nd, so libraries will be up and running for the first day of school. Here at the middle school, we've had substantial renovations going on, and we've been real fortunate that over at the Township Code Office, Bob Downey has worked very closely with us, as we waited for several weeks and most of the summer for a letter from the New Jersey Department of Education for educational adequacy review of the renovations that are taking place here, he could not issue building permits. However, he did allow us to get- However, he did allow us to get started with demolition, which was a major part of the project. We had several masonry walls to take down between classrooms, and we have since received the educational adequacy review, and just today, received our permits. So, we will actually have a crew working right now in the building, framing some walls up. We will be closed, but we will be ready with all of those areas. You'll see kind of a facelift throughout the middle school as well. The new main entrance to the middle school will be adjacent to the Performing Arts Center because the main office for the middle school is now housed in what was the former guidance suite. You'll see a new sign go up over that area, kind of drawing people in. All the lockers throughout the building have been painted purple, acoustic panels done throughout the building, new signage, really gave the building a new identity. As well, we've done an enormous amount of painting, both with a commercial contractor in some of the large areas as well as district staff. So, when you walk through the middle school, I think you'll be real pleased and impressed with what we have going on there. Elsewhere throughout the districts, with our standard summer cleaning program, we're in good shape. We have rec department at Woodland and the lake. They finished up in the beginning of August, so we're pushing through those schools now. Barclaybrook and Brookside, we were fortunate that we didn't have any activities there this summer, so we were able to kind of get ahead of the curve. Obviously, the new high school is being turned over to us in a, in a clean condition. And this is kind of the last building that we'll be in, but we're able to kind of move staff around between the buildings to get a final kind of push through this facility. So, I feel confident that we'll be in real good shape for the opening and looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Teig. We'll go to Dr. Hamilton.
Just one question for Jerry. It's great to hear that we have seventy-one temporary classrooms being removed.
Yes.
That's a great job, but I would like to let the public know that there is a cost for tearing it down.
That is correct.
And how much is that?
We were paying for all eighty-nine units, I believe it was one million five hundred and twenty thousand, and then the removal cost nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and eight thousand, somewhere in that range? Does that sound right?
It sounds a little high.
Or no, it was at five, and the nine was left over?
The only reason why I'm bringing it up, we don't need to figure, is let the people know that even though we are tearing it down, and there would be a savings in the future, we have an outlay right now.
Exactly.
In tearing it down, and that was all contracted when we first originally leased them.
That is correct. So, we will not realize that four million five twenty this first year, that won't, the majority of that won't kick in until next year.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Hey, Dr. Hamilton?
Moving on to the superintendent's report, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that personnel items A through Q-Q be approved by roll call vote.
Is there a motion? Mr. Kaufman? Is there a second by Ms. Antalis? Is there any comments or questions? Ms. Ferroni?
I just had a question about in K, on KK regarding replacements due to resignation of supervisor of language arts and supervisor of PE, health, and athletics. What was the process in regards to coming to those appointments?
The general process for supervisors is there's a screening, and the supervisor of language arts position, there was a screening done by Dr. Gorman, he supervises that area, then a committee, and then recommendations made from that committee to the superintendent, and then the superintendent, assistant superintendent, interview finalists. And the same process was in place with the supervisor of health and PE, but the screening was done at the high school level.
For some reason, I'm recalling that board interviewed final candidates at some level. I know in the past, so I, I wasn't questioning the individual, but I was questioning whether the board or anyone on the committee or personnel of the board did any of the final interviews.
That has not been the, the procedure for supervisory level. That is the procedure that you just described for principal level and up.
For, I didn't hear that.
Principal level and, and above.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Klein?
Quite a few here. On M, we show department coordinators at each school. Is this a position that we've always had?
Yes, this is, they're, they're posted, but this is a procedural item that occurs each year this time of year.
And they work along with the supervisor?
Correct.
Then we go to double D. This is on Avid, and we're increasing the, their salaries from a hundred to a hundred and seventeen percent. Am I reading that right?
Yes. Jeff, you want to take it?
Specifically, the Avid seventeen percent is the three to the right on MTMS. So, what's happened with a new schedule in place is that teachers teach four, four blocks, and the Avid class takes place during an elective period where the person that's teaching it has a prep or a related art, so that person is just getting above.
Okay.
Teaching an extra class for seventeen percent.
I'm sorry to get a chance to get into the board office to get this clarified before, which is what we usually do, so just bear with me if you don't mind. II and JJ, student orientation. Why? Why so many people?
Simply stated, for the transition purposes, it's a brand-new building, that sixth graders are coming here, and then new, our high school kids are going both facilities, and there's maps, and that, we felt was a very proactive approach towards getting everybody acclimated to that building. I mean, I, I came out the other end today when I went to myself.
Okay, and then lastly, which actually, actually, there were two items here. On KK, when it comes to voting on this, I just want to let it be known that my stance on new positions at this point, whether they're needed or not, and I know that they are needed, but I cannot, I cannot vote for it, so I will probably vote no on that or at least abstain. And I'll give you my reasons later on. And then I think I have MM. Oh, also, on LL, if it's in this report, we can mention a name?
No, because they have not been raised.
Okay, because there's, well, then let that go. We'll handle that later. And then just one other thing, on, on page seventeen, I would gather this is extra hours for lunch duty, toilet duty, and so on and so forth?
They're, they're not actually extra hours. These are powers that each year, the power assignment has to be restated for organizational purposes, so.
So, these are for the powers?
That is correct.
And I think, and again, I apologize for that. That's it for me at this point.
Mr. Masters?
Just back to DD. Mr. Gorman, you, you said something, I want clarification, you said the hundred and seventeen, the seventeen percent? Thank you. The seventeen percent specifically applies to the column on the right.
As it relates to the Avid program.
Okay.
The other ones are similar sections being picked up by high school teachers, teaching a sixth class.
Okay.
Past their contract.
But not Avid?
Not Avid, though, from what I see, the only Avid sections, and they're not extra sections, they're just the Avid sections, are being picked up by general, by content teachers above their contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, just a real quick question. Let me use the mic. Not that I'm looking or, or doing any kind of analysis here, but I know we're appointing a lot of different people for a lot of different things, and stuff is all over the map, but I see a lot of names that are repeated here several times for different, you know, for different things, but a lot of the same names. Are the teachers that are being put in these, for lack of a better term, buckets, are they volunteering for this, or are they selected for this, or is there a process?
There is a process. There is a process. The process is that the positions are posted, and then the principals or supervisors, depending on where those positions, or the, the reporting line for those positions, then they make the, they conduct the interviews and make the selection, and then those selections are then placed on the agenda for board approval. But there is a posting and an interview, application and interview process.
Okay. Anyone else? Then we will have a roll call. Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antalis?
Yes, but I recuse myself on item MM.
MM, so noted. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
I will abstain on KK. The reason being is based on what our tax bills were. I'm looking to cut, and therefore, I can't, I can't approve no positions.
So noted. Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. We will go to board action.
Moving on to board action items, board, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that board action items A through L be approved by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Antalis, Mr. Braverman? Are there any comments or questions by the board? Mr. Klein?
On D, alert now, the student messaging system for eleven thousand dollars. What is that?
That's the automated telephone system that we use. The contract expired, and it is now up for renewal.
Okay, and then, position, on G and H, is that the position that is to?
Yes.
For English?
No.
Or is that the secretary?
That is the coordinator position that we discussed. The successful candidate for that position is or was the secretary. Yes.
Okay, and let me see if there's anything else. OO. Oh, and then we go to OO. This is.
OO.
I don't think so.
Oo, oo. I believe that's, well, I'm lost here, and I don't want to waste a lot of time, but OO, is that where we're announcing Jerry Sullivan for twelve months?
That was our, that was, the motion was just voted on and passed.
That was for twelve months.
Yes.
I was just very happy to see that. That was a good move on boards. Thank you.
Anyone, Mr. Chiarella?
I just have a quick question on A. I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see this earlier. I was, if you could just quickly explain what that is?
Mike, you want to take that? Residency issues?
Yes, the district affords transient students and their families sixty days to occupy residency status in Monroe. We give them sixty days free. After that, they need to establish a residency contract and pay tuition.
There's about eleven of those youngsters in this particular motion.
They're probably in the process of closing, and...
We'll make sure we collect our tuition due.
Thank you.
And then just one other question, please?
Mr. Klein?
The extra sheet that we got yesterday where it says board action, that is under yours, or that's under the business administrator?
That is, that was actually infused in the regular report, the addendum you're referring to.
Yes.
Those items were infused in the general report.
Because I saw the personnel part. My question on J was for this Dr. Russell Gorman. I also see him later on. I think it would be in the, the business administrator's report, that we were going to pay him thirty-five hundred dollars a student to evaluate Jamesburg students. Was that correct?
Yes, this is a consultant, a, an appointed certified clinical psychologist that serves as a consultant to the child study team in special circumstances for youngsters with special needs. Would not be exclusively for Jamesburg youngsters. It would be available to...
Now, with Jamesburg, we pay for that, or is Jamesburg paying for that?
Mike.
Is that under the business administrator's report?
It is. It appears in both places.
Yes, because we're...
For Mike, because this is all confusing.
Right, we're, we're under the board action for the superintendent's report. Are there any questions for the board action items for the superintendent's report? Okay, if not...
No. Ms. Antalis?
Did you get it?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through L passes.
Before I conclude my report, I'd like to welcome Pamela Ackerman Garcia, who's here this evening, our new supervisor of language arts. If you would just stand up so our board could see who you are. Welcome aboard. And Mr. Greg Byer, who is here also this evening. Congratulations, sir. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
And we will move on to the business administrator's report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through double B be approved by consent roll call.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Braverman? And who's second?
Mr. Kaufman.
Mr. Kaufman. Comments or questions for Mr. Gorski?
Mr. Klein?
Now, we'll bring that up. Under Q, it is recommended Board of Education approve the appointment of certified school psychologist, thirty-five hundred dollars per case, and I guess you'll explain what that was. That was for special ed? And is this something that we've had before? Is it just a new contract?
It, it's a contract renewal, and to your earlier question, any outside tuition or outside services that are rendered to Jamesburg students are paid for by Jamesburg.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will have roll call.
Ms. Antalis?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, except for, the bottom of Q, and this is what I missed, it says recommended Board of Education by label child study team in possibility for Arabic education evaluation.
Are we voting, or are we discussing?
We, we passed the...
No, I understand that. Well, in this case, that I'm against. So, I'm voting no to that.
Okay.
Yes on everything else.
And no to on Q? What, what? Mr. Klein, what letter are you voting no to?
Well, unfortunately, it's, it's under Q.
Okay.
It's not giving us another designation.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would have questioned that when questioning was allowed.
So, he's voting no on Q?
For the record, that was no on Q.
In this case, yes.
So noted. Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through double B has passed.
Okay, thank you. And we will go to number ten on the agenda, the board president's report, and since this is the end of the summer, we have, getting ready for this, coming up with the school year, and it's, I think, going to be a very exciting year with the new schools. Just want to remind the public that the ribbon-cutting ceremony is on Tuesday, September sixth, at six-thirty for public tours of the new high school. So, we hope to see you all there. We will go on to committee reports. Anyone who has a committee they would like to report on? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, the curriculum committee met this evening to talk about moving forward with the technology platform for the new high school. We're happy to say that the iPads are in. We're getting, the technology team is getting ready to configure them and get ready to get moved out. We're also getting ready to take a look at the usage statements to make sure they're as bulletproof as we could possibly make them to cover things like damage and self-insurance, and rest assured, as brought up earlier, we are taking every possible contingency into account. We realize that, you know, while these things are very nice to have, we want to make sure that not only are the items protected, but the district is protected from any unforeseen expenses. So, we will definitely be moving forward in a due diligent manner to make sure that we are dotting every i and crossing every t. This is a new technology, and we want to embrace it. We don't want to litigate it or put protections around it so that it becomes unusable. We are also moving for, forward on Core K-12, which is going to be replacing Lernia. It was a free service that was available to the state. The state did not decide to move forward in that particular platform, so we need to find a substitute, and we are going to move forward with K-12. As we move forward with the new technology at the high school, I've asked Mr. Gorman to, in the upcoming Board of Ed meetings, to give a small little presentation on where we are and how we're using the technologies, both for the, the end user, the students, but also how we're creating content and trying to corner the market in this technology for our district. Pretty much that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Leary?
We have had an eventful week. We went, Dr. Hamilton, Mike Gorski, and I went down to the Department of Education, Division of Finance, talked with the Assistant Commissioner there. And the meeting was arranged through the good offices of Dr. Linda Greenstein. We had an hour and a half of discussion, and we brought out some facts. Dr. Hamilton did a very fine presentation of why we're so different. And here are some facts. There are eight school districts in the 14th Legislative District. There's a cluster that are greater than $3,000 per student. The highest is Hamilton, $5,600. The second highest is Jamesburg with $5,400. Then there's a lower, lower cluster with four school districts. The bottom of that lower cluster is Monroe with $354 after that super generous contribution from Governor Christie. This school district should be getting $36 million, and he gives us a measly $2 million. I tell you, when you look at the display and it lays out the gross inequity enough to make you puke. And then we had some follow-up meetings to talk about what's the situation with regard to Jamesburg. And they're still fiddle-farting around, making out as if they're poor, when the reality is, particularly when you go and look at what the numbers reveal, they're a bunch of phonies. And I'll say that in public, right to their face. And.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
What?
I, I assumed you were finished. I apologize.
What?
That's okay.
Well.
Is, is that the end of your committee report?
No, I, we're also doing some other good things. We're doing a paperless electronic staff, employees. We're doing a renewal, at which we did, the food service management. We also have a contract with the Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission that provides the food service for the Academy Learning Center, and we've had a long and good relationship there. And we're planning for the ribbon cutting on September the 6th, and we're looking forward to that. And finally, the closeout of the ARRA stimulus funds, which would be by August 30th, right?
August 31st, correct.
And right now, the auditors from Samuel Klein and Company are present. They're doing their job, and I expect, like times past, we'll get an absolute clean bill of health by saying that everything is in order. Mike Gorski does a great job.
Does that conclude your report?
That's my completed report.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, thank you. We had a Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee meeting yesterday. It wasn't as exciting as that one, but I want to, I want to just thank Jerry Teague. I think he did, he did an excellent job of summing up everything that we went through yesterday, basically about the construction updates and everything that's going on. And Jerry is not only a wonderful man, but he's also a fantastic asset for this district. I don't know, you know, I don't know how we would be getting through this without his, his efforts and leadership. He's got all these projects going on at once, and somehow he's juggling them and also informing us at the same time, and I think it's commendable. Just a couple, just a couple other notes from our meetings that we had, we're, we're going back out, going out to bid this year for our snow, our snow removal contracts. So that's something that we, we discussed. We also discussed the telephone system upgrades that was, that we also discussed earlier. And then the, we picked the color for the, for the board office, and it will not be purple and gold. It's going to be pink and fuchsia. Just kidding. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, then we will go on to other Board of Education business. Mr. Tesler?
Just a quick comment, I'm just going to get off my chest, that, just a reminder to everybody, we are a public organization, elected officials, and, and we got, we are on TV, and just let's be careful of comments we make and make sure they're respectful and professional.
I'll stand by my remarks.
Mr. Leary?
I've done the calculations very carefully.
Mr. Leary, can I speak? Mr. Leary? Ms. Ferroni?
I would be remiss if I did not address Mr. Leary's comments. It's appalling to me that you would insinuate that Jamesburg isn't poor. It's an extremely poor district compared to Monroe, where we send our children, but we do an extremely good job of educating our grammar school kids so they are on the same page when they get up here. Comparisons, Monroe's budget of $110 million compared to our budget of $11 million, where your pennies, a penny in Monroe, John, is worth almost $800,000. A penny in Jamesburg is $23,000. So again, I find it appalling that you would state that when the state has stripped us of all our funding, they unilaterally, across the board, cut it and had no idea the devastation that they caused to such a small district that continually tries to do the right thing and continually gets its funding cut.
Mr. Leary?
John, there's nothing to talk about.
Mr. Klein?
Just an update. First thing is, I want to thank Jerry Teague for the high school tour that I was able to arrange last week with residents from Stonebridge, Regency, and some from Greenbrier. We had between 60 and 70 people. Jerry ran one hell of a tour, and the best part of it were the bathrooms. No, these people, these people walked around with their mouths open. There were so many rumors going around about swimming pools and specialty sauna rooms for the teachers. I mean, there was so much garbage going around that these people saw for themselves that in the school, it's a plain Jane school that is, is just utterly fantastic. So again, Jerry, thank you very much for that. An update on the conversions. I know you, the board members here are probably sick of hearing it, but I'd like everybody else to hear this. There was a law passed at the end of 2009 that if a builder that was approved for a PRC, an age restricted community, and he did not, or they did not, take a deposit, they have a right to convert it to a family community. I've been fighting against this at hearings at the Planning Board, council meeting, and I'm also on the zoning board. And I just want to update you on this. We had basically two applicants. One was Hovnanian, and this goes back, this is over, a little over a month ago. Their original plan was 328 age restricted homes, no children. They then came back and wanted to convert it to 300. It was going to break down to 100 and some odd age directed homes, which means they would aim at over 55, but would sell it to anybody. A small section of affordable housing, 70 homes, and the rest were going to be market rate three-bedroom homes. I testified in front of the Planning Board as a resident, and it was turned down. The Board turned the, the application down. Hovnanian came back with a counterproposal a few weeks later, and they wound up settling with 135 age restricted homes. In other words, only over 55, a handful at 48. But again, there's no children added to our school district. The 70 affordable homes, they're making a payment of $600,000 to go into the township's Affordable Housing Fund to be used elsewhere, whether the town wants to build it there or elsewhere in the community, that money will go for that. And there'll be roughly 126 family homes. So now, instead of having almost 700 possible students, if you use the figure of two per home, we're down to roughly 250. Last night, another application was heard. Now, that was in front of the Planning Board. The application last night was Renaissance Properties. I forgot what the name of their development is. And that was in front of the zoning board, and I was forced to recuse myself. I was not able to testify there. And that was roughly somewhere around 130 homes. It was supposed to be age restricted. It wound up being approved to convert it over to 104 family homes and 26 affordable townhouses, I guess. I was totally against that. I was not able to speak up against it. Of course, I had to recuse myself, so you're talking about roughly 130, another 260 students coming into our schools at a bare minimum. I want you all to understand that with this conversion act, it's similar to what the Mount Laurel decision was. These are decisions that were made by either the State Supreme Court or the Legislature to protect the developers. Trust me when I tell you, it's too long of a story to go through, and I'm, I'm long-winded anyway, but all they're doing, all this act was for, was to protect the developers. These two developers did absolutely nothing in two to three years after they received, in one case a variance, and the other case approval, to build what they had planned. And for two to three years, they did absolutely nothing to promote it, absolutely nothing to sell it, and they come in front of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board stating, well, we can no longer sell PRCs because there's too many of them in Monroe Township and there's not enough calls for it. Well, for your own edification, I live in Regency, they're selling 70 to 80 units a year. Stonebridge is selling anywhere from 70 to 90 a year, and those are your two majors. And then you have Renaissance, which is, so there is a market for it. They go, they base it on, they can't sell it, and we are not allowed to use the, the additional student population to vote down an application. That's the idiocy of this law. Thank God, it, it runs out August 31st of this year, and it's over. The last thing is about the taxes. First, I want you to understand that for every 700, roughly $750,000 that we're able to save, it equates to about one cent on our taxes. So of course, we're all looking for great savings. I got my bill, and my bill was almost $800 more than last year. I know the way everybody feels, especially in these times, and for the remainder of my time on the Board, which will be up in this coming September, I guess I have one more year, I will not run again, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that where we can cut, which the Board has done, I'm not shooting the Board down. The Board last year cut almost $2 million before the budget even went up for vote, and then we had to cut another million dollars. Unless we get our fair share, and that's another thing, another issue I've been fighting for, and finally, they are making headway, I will, I will attempt to try to save where we can, but I will not try to hurt children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Antellus?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Hamilton. Dr. Hamilton has been named the NAACP Educator of the Year here in New Jersey, so congratulations. Very proud, very deserving. He'll be honored on September 10th.
Thank you.
Second, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Monroe Ed Foundation. We're having a softball game on September 9th. It'll be the Teachers versus the Police. Again, it's a little bit of a revenge game from our basketball, 6:30 PM at the girls' softball field, which is over by the Road Department on, I believe that's Gravel Hill Spotswood Road. Third thing I want to talk about is the item that Mrs. Arminio brought up. I really don't understand how discussing the new name of a performing arts center is a closed session item. There's nothing confidential about it. At our last meeting, Mr. Braverman actually made a motion, I second, we actually had some really good discussion about this. Mr. Gunkelman brought up some good points, and I do agree that this is not something that can be discussed in closed session.
Mr. Gorski?
Yes, a point of clarification regarding the agenda. There was a late addition to continue the discussion that was in the public session at the last meeting regarding the naming of the new Monroe Township High School Performing Arts Center. And due to this late addition, there was an error adding it to two different places on the agenda, both in the public section and in the closed session section. It should have only been discussed in the public section. Apologize for the confusion that that caused. And if the chairs, if it's a chairperson's pleasure, we could have that discussion before going into closed session.
Yes, we can have that discussion.
I just have one more question. I don't understand why it wasn't brought up at the Buildings and Grounds meeting yesterday. This is part of Buildings and Grounds. Why wasn't it discussed there or put on the agenda?
I have no idea why the Buildings and Grounds Committee did not discuss it. I was not here at the July meeting. I don't know the conversation you had at July, so I didn't know that it was supposed to be put on the agenda. Mr. Braverman?
Well, just to move things along, I move that we name the Performing Arts Center in the new high school, the Monroe Township Performing Arts Center.
That's second. Is second by Ms. Antellus? And so we'll open it up to the Board for discussion. Any comments or questions?
Well, I, my.
Mr. Kaufman?
My only question is, does any other board member have any other potential suggestion other than that? Because you, I guess, before we, you know, vote on something or decide, is there anybody, any other name or any other option that some of the board members would like to hear about or, or entertain? I, I, in the last meeting, thought that that would be a very, very good idea. But as was articulated earlier this evening, there were a lot of people that fought for the high school over the years that it took to put up, and there were a lot of people that put an enormous amount of time, of their own time, that were not paid, that spent unbelievable amounts of time, put their families in jeopardy in one particular case that I know of, and actually were represented here tonight. I also don't agree that we should be naming the Performing Arts Center after a person. I think if I was on the Board, if I, if I was on the Board, I don't think I would have recommended the Marasco Center either, because I just think it's fundamentally not a good idea. But that being said, I think we should also pay a service for Kids First, who put out an incredible amount of effort, and let's face it, without their support and their due diligence and their work, that school physically would not be there, period, end of story. So I would also entertain Kids First Performing Arts Center.
Okay, anyone else? Nobody?
Well, no, there's one here.
Well, I'll.
Mr. Tesler?
Sorry about that. I don't know the proper procedure, but if I, I would like to also put it out there to name the Performing Arts Center, the Ralph Ferry Performing Arts Center.
Okay, so right now, we have.
Can you repeat that?
I couldn't even hear it down here.
Mr. Tesler, could you please repeat your statement?
I guess I'd like to, I don't know if the proper procedure to amend the resolution, but I would like to also put it out there to name the Performing Arts Center in the new high school, the Ralph Ferry Performing Arts Center.
Well, right now, we have a motion to name.
Well, just a minute, we have a motion. It's under discussion, correct?
That's what I am.
I, I, I agree with what Luke Kaufman said. There were a lot of people involved. But a lot of people equally, and perhaps they ought to have some kind of honorarium in the, in the Performing Arts Center, some wall plaque indicating that they were all involved. However, Monroe Township Performing Arts Center is where it is. It tells you where it is. Anybody coming into town knows it's here. When they, as Mr. Gunkelman said last month, when they come in and they're looking for the Marasco. the Marasco Performing Arts Center, their GPS just doesn't tell them anything.
Anyone else? Right now, on the floor, there is a motion to name the auditorium, the Monroe Township- Mr. Masters, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've always felt, I'm going to agree with Mr. Kaufman, I'm very against naming a facility after a person, I think it's problematic because it becomes exclusionary, and also, in the long term, it could be problematic for a whole host of reasons, which is why I don't, I support the motion to just name it the Monroe Township Performing Arts Center. It's definitive, and it's very clear.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we will have a roll call on naming the new auditorium, the Monroe Township Performing Arts Center.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
No.
Mrs. Ferroni?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Klein?
This is naming it Monroe Township?
Performing Arts Center.
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
No.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Madam Board President, motion does not pass.
Okay, is there any further discussion or motions made in regard to this? Or would we want to table this for, Mr. Tesler?
I'd like to make a motion to name the Performing Arts Center in the new high school, the Ralph Ferry Performing Arts Center.
It's, motion made by Mr. Tesler, second by Mr. Chiarella. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion, therefore, we will have a roll call on naming the new high school Performing Arts Center, the Ralph Ferry Performing Arts Center, is that it, Mr. Tesler?
Dr. Ralph Ferry.
Dr. Ralph P. Ferry?
Correct.
Okay.
That's fine.
The motion is to name the new Monroe Township Performing Arts Center, the Dr. Ralph P. Ferry Performing Arts Center. Motion made by Ira Tesler, second by Ken Chiarella.
We'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Klein?
I abstain.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Mr. Masters?
No.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion does not pass.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to make a motion that the Performing Arts Center be named the Kids First Monroe Township, the Kids First Performing Arts Center.
Is there a second? Okay, there is no second.
I have no second.
Mr. Chiarella? Is there gonna be a discussion on this one? Okay, we'll have a roll call.
The motion on the floor is to name the Monroe, the new Monroe Township Performing Arts Center, the Kids First Performing Arts Center. Motion made by Luke Kaufman, seconded by Ken Chiarella. Ms. Antellus?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Mr. Masters?
No.
Mr. Tesler?
No.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Madam Board President, motion does not pass.
Well, at this point, we don't have to have a name right now, we need some more time to, to just think about it and discuss it. Mr. Klein?
I just want to make a suggestion.
Yes?
I don't have his name in front of me, but we had a Marine that was a student at our schools who lost both of his legs. He's a war hero. And I'm sorry, I did not come prepared with his name, but whoever lives in Monroe definitely knows who I'm speaking about. That's it. And if I'm able to make a motion, I would make a motion to name the Performing Arts Center after a war hero. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Leary, is there any discussion?
I have a-
Mr. Masters?
I would support something a little more general, say, the Veterans Performing Arts Center, or something to do with that, and not, again, name it after a person, which I have a fundamental issue with, that's all.
Okay.
Can I just change my motion?
You can amend your motion?
Amend my motion.
My motion-
Or we can vote on your motion, and then-
I would like to name the Performing Center, or nominate the name, Monroe Township Veterans Performing Arts Center.
Okay, so you're gonna amend your motion from the Monroe Township, the person's name, to the Monroe Township Veterans Performing Arts Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leary, would you agree to that amendment?
I would second.
Okay, is there going to be a discussion on that? The Monroe Township Veterans Performing Arts Center. So we will have a roll call on that.
Ms. Antellus?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
I'm going to say no, because I think we're throwing out too many names, and I think we need to table this for more discussion.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Madam Board President, motion does not pass.
Okay.
Madam President?
We are in-
Madam President?
This is not public forum.
Point of order.
Mr. Braverman?
Move the meeting be adjourned.
Second meeting? It's a meeting over.
We have a closed session on the agenda.
It's a privileged motion.
Okay.
No discussion, just vote.
We'll have a roll call on adjourning the meeting. Mr. Braverman made a motion to adjourn the meeting, Ms. Antellus seconded that, that motion, we have to act on that motion. So we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
No.
Mrs. Ferroni?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
You can't go with the closed session. I really want to say abstain, I'm going to say no.
Mr. Klein?
No, and this is unprofessional.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Mr. Masters?
Wait, this is unprofessional? No.
Mr. Tesler?
No.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Madam Board President, motion to go adjourn, does not pass.
Okay, at this time-
Are we still in board business?
We are under other board business.
Okay, I, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, please do.
The superintendent's action plan is comprised of six goals. Number six was added in August of two thousand and ten relative to the transition in the district with the moving of the sixth graders, the opening of the middle school, and the opening of the high school, as that goal will be accomplished in the next couple of weeks, and we have a rather big initiative underway regarding the implementation of the technology initiative. We will be having a summer retreat with the administrators next week, and I'd like to know if the board would consider us working to develop a goal specific to the technology initiative, since it is such a large initiative, to replace goal number six.
Any discussion on that?
Yes.
To have a, would you like to make a motion, and we can vote on it?
I'll second.
Any discussion? We're having a roll call on adding a technology initiative as a goal for the superintendent's. Superintendent. Roll call.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Kaufman?
Mr. Kaufman.
And Ms. Antellus.
Okay. Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, Mr. Masters?
I'm sorry. Yes, I wanted to entertain putting forth a motion to amend the previously authorized and adopted board motion on July twentieth appropriating the additional state aid for the science curriculum, the new science curriculum and the zero period. I want, I don't have the exact numbers, I wanted to add the rescission, I guess, of the pay-to-participate program.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella? Okay, we can open it up to the board for discussion. Mr. Masters, if you would like to explain what you, what that, what you were intending to-
Okay, I'll be brief, because we've been going on for a while. I was getting a lot of feedback and speculation about why I voted no, I was the only no vote last, at the last board meeting, particularly that I wasn't in support of science in the schools, which isn't a fact. I'm actually an IT guy, so I'm big into science. That wasn't the issue. The issue was, and I think someone in the public brought it up, is how fast we briefly discussed the pay-to-participate program, whether it should be included in, or the removal of it should be included in the additional state aid that we got back, the eight hundred and eighty-seven, I believe, and change. I believe in, with the current, with the budgets not passing, and the recession and possible depression, times are tough for a lot of people, and I think what we're doing by implementing this pay-to-participate program is we're adding an additional burden to a very specific subset of our students. Making, parents are coming up, saying they have to make tough choices about what sports their kids can play, what, what clubs they can participate in, whether they participate in a club and a sport, either or, if they have multiple siblings overlapping, now they have, siblings are battling it out, what sports they can participate in, and I believe it's detrimental, not only to the programs that we're putting forth, but also to the educational, the educational aspect of the students. Because I believe that the entire curriculum, including all the extracurricular activities, should be included in an adequate education. It breathes, it, you get team building, there's team building, there's leadership involved, self-esteem, independent school spirit, cultural things, I think all of it should be included in our curriculum. So, again, that's why I'm asking, I'm putting forth this motion, I'm also explaining myself, as why we should remove the pay-to-participate program.
So, Mr. Masters, I believe the motion in July was to have zero-period science program and tax relief?
Yes.
And what are you proposing?
Zero-period science program and removal of the pay-to-participate.
Okay. Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just, thanks. I just wanted to just piggyback on what Mr. Masters had said. You know, more and more, our, our, the colleges are looking at how well-rounded our students are. They're looking at not just their academic performance, but some of the extracurricular activities that they're, that they're involved in. And I think that if we, if we're really serious about giving our students a leg up, that we should make it easier for them to be able to participate in those activities, so that they could have that well-rounded experience that's gonna, that'll lead to better, you know, better standing in college rankings and stuff like that. So, I, that's, that's why I agree with this, I think we should do it.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, Kath, I just wanted to say, I agree with my board members down there, that's why, exactly why I brought it up at the last meeting, I felt it was the right way to go. We need to make sure that we can help our community wherever we can, and I thought it was a great idea. Last meeting, I think it's a great idea, this meeting.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but my personal feeling, when I initially found out we were receiving the eight hundred-some-odd thousand dollars back of state aid, I would like to see the entire amount go back for tax relief, and since it was a bonus, we never expected it at all, just leave it as is. I don't have a problem with the pay-to-play, I have two children, and it would cost me two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year for have my two children participate in their athletic and, and clubs in the high school, and I know personally, I can, I will adjust my own budget to find the two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the year, and I think it's worth the investment in my kids' future and to participate in athletics and to beef up their resumes for, for college. And I think, I know times are tough, but I think, I think others can find that as well, so I don't have a problem with that, keeping in the pay-to-play, but since I wasn't here and could not vote on just taking the entire amount and giving it back to the taxpayers, if the majority of the, of the board after this discussion supports removing pay-to-play, I will, I will support that as well.
Anyone else? And Ms. Antellus?
Mr. Gorski, how much will it cost to reinstate the pay-to-play? Eliminated, I'm sorry.
Yes, pay-to-participate was a revenue source incorporated in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget for a net amount of approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So it would be a utilization of the state aid money of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So just for further clarification, under the current motion that's on the floor, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one thirty-three would be used to restore the science program, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to restore zero-period transportation, one hundred and sixty-five thousand of the elimination of a revenue source from pay-to-participate, leaving seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars as tax relief.
So what you're saying is if we didn't reinstitute the pay-to-play, we would have over two hundred thousand dollars for tax relief?
Two hundred, just about two hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Braverman?
Yeah. I find it interesting that every time this came up in committee, philosophically, I was opposed to pay for, pay for play. And in every committee meeting where I opposed it, every one of you that was at those meetings defended it. I would suggest each of you that have, that keep changing your minds, meet with your advisory groups prior to the meetings, so we can have a vote, an intelligence discussion, and get over it.
Anyone else? And we will have a roll call to amend the motion of July seventh, twentieth, from zero-period the science program and tax relief to zero-period science program and the pay-to-participate elimination. Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Before, before you move to that, just for clarity, the board should be advised that
there are parents who have already paid, and we would need to issue refunds. We've also devoted considerable time and effort into developing policies to go along with the pay-to-participate initiative, which the board authorized us to do, so just as you vote, you be mindful of those, those parameters.
Mrs. Kolpanovic? Just like to add to that, when the discussion came up, and I haven't changed my mind, I had asked Dr. Hamilton if he could take all the numbers this year of older participants from this past year, and then give us the number of participants next year, and let's see what the difference is, and then perhaps bring up this issue again next year.
Mr. Klein?
Can we just have somebody clarify what we're voting on?
Yes, I will.
It's not really clear.
Mr. Gorski.
Yes. At the last July twentieth meeting, action was taken to utilize eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars of additional state aid in the following fashion. The implementation of a science program for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, the, the reformation of zero-period transportation for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was previously cut, and the utilization of the remainder being two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for tax relief in the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget. That was the motion that was passed.
And what is our motion now?
The motion now is to amend that previously made motion, to still have the science initiative for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one thirty-three, to still have zero-period transportation for two hundred and fifty thousand, to eliminate a revenue source being the pay-to-participate program in the eleven, twelve budget for a one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which would leave seventy-four thousand, nine eighty-nine for tax relief for year twelve, thirteen.
Thank you.
I just have a comment to what Ms. Antellus said. I did do some research, because I was on that meeting talking about the studies, there's actually two recent, I guess, census about what pay-to-participate- There's actually two recent, I guess, census about what pay to participate does to a, it's actually a sports program. One of them was in oh-eight, oh-nine in Maryland, where a thirty-dollar, a drastic thirty-dollar increase to the athletic participation fee, I'm sorry, two thirty dollars resulted in a twenty percent decrease in participation. And another one was in Michigan, the entire state of Michigan, five hundred and fifty-eight schools, high schools. They, they found out that a hundred percent, a hundred dollar caused a ten percent decrease in participation, and actually, as you increase it, it exponentially decreased the participation in, these are only sports programs, not clubs. So, there is research out there about what pay to participate does.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
This is quick. I would ask, you know, there, there have been changes in laws over the past few years about board members and conflict of interest in the districts, ethics, there's courses that board members take, and, you know, we do all this stuff as we move forward. So, I would ask the, the chairperson of the policy committee to take a look at developing a policy which would prohibit any board member-
Mr. Kaufman? Oh, does that have to do with this motion?
No, I thought we're, we're not done?
No.
I thought we were on, sorry.
No, we are, we are still on this motion, we have, is any other-
I'm done.
-conversation or discussion on this motion? Then we will have a roll call on changing or amending the motion.
Okay. The motion is to amend the July twentieth action to utilize the additional state aid money of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars for science initiative, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand one thirty-three, zero-period transportation, reinstatement of two hundred and fifty thousand, and tax relief of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine eighty-nine, to reflect and amend as follows. Utilization of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and two, twenty-two dollars of additional state aid money for the science program initiative, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand one thirty-three, zero-period transportation, two hundred and fifty thousand, elimination of a revenue source of pay to participate, netting one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and having seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars be applied to the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget as tax relief.
That motion needs to be amended. Reason being, the, the, the action already taken on the first two items is irreversible. The orders have already been placed for the science, so the board can't revisit that item. Employees have already been recalled for zero-period, so the amendment has to reflect the item relative to pay to participate and tax reserve.
The, the science and the zero-period would still be an appropriation of that additional money.
Not if the motion is defeated.
Okay. Mr. Masters, would you be willing to amend your motion to just include the tax relief in the, in return for the pay to participate?
Yes.
And Mr. Chiarella? So, now we have to, since we amended it, we have to approve the amendment before we can approve the first amendment, is that correct?
But if we approve the amendment, it would implicitly approve the second amendment then, right?
Well, you have two amendments. You have your original amendment, and then an amendment to an amendment. Is that correct?
I believe Mr. Masters can restate his motion, as Dr. Hamilton instructed.
I would like to-
Eliminating pay to participate and having the difference go to tax relief.
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Chiarella, you are okay with that? So, now, we will have a roll call.
Okay. Roll call is to amend the previously made motion, eliminating pay to participate income from the eleven, twelve budget, and having the proceeds go towards a net out of tax relief. Ms. Antellas?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Yes. Yes. The motion is to utilize monies that otherwise would have been returned towards tax relief in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars to eliminate a revenue source of pay to participate of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, leaving a remainder of seventy-four thousand nine eighty-nine for tax relief.
No.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
No.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, the motion to amend does not pass.
Okay, so we will stay with the amended motion, the original motion from July of twentieth?
Yes.
Is there any other Board of Education business? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, before my chairman of the policy committee goes to the laboratory, I would just ask that at their next meeting, oh, sorry, it's right here, I know you couldn't hear me, look at a policy which would, as I mentioned before, you know, there's ethics, there's conflicts of interest, we want to make sure that everything is covered and all our bases are looked at, which would prohibit any seated, seated board member who has a conflict of interest in the district from sitting as either board president or board vice president. There's a lot of issues that are governed around the participation between board members, the president, and the superintendent of schools, and in the chain of command, that could present a potential huge issue. So, I would ask that they would look at a policy which would prohibit that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, and Mr. Chiarella?
This is just quick, this is really fast. Ms. Antellas, could you please tell us who won the basketball game? And I know we're having the softball game, but I just want to, I just, I have a little foggy on that.
You're trying to give me trouble, Mr. Chiarella. The basketball game score was sixty-two for the teachers and thirty-one for the cops. For the record.
Is there any other Board of Education business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the Monroe Township Education Foundation.
If there is no other Board of Education business, we will go to the number thirteen closed session resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter two-three-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five NJSA, ten colon four dash six through ten colon four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subject, superintendent's evaluation. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed to the public at such time that the matters have been resolved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we need a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Who's first? Mr. Chiarella?
I'll be a second. Iris first.
Who's Iris first? Mr. Tesler's first, Mr. Chiarella's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, we will go to a closed session. At this time, the board will move back into public session. We will go to number fourteen on the agenda to the public forum. Again, anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I told you to come up here.
Mr. Homoki?
Good evening. My name is Joe Homoki, sixty-one Hapman Road. I just want to give you a fifteen-second history on this auditorium. This was not part of the original high school. This was an addition, this thing, this high school didn't have anything, and that's consequently the reason we named it Marasco Center. And it was one of those emotional things that somebody brought it up, that we should name it after Richie, and then the next thing you know is, it was named. But this was not part of it. Consequently, the high school, the new high school, the auditorium is part of the total structure. It's not a separate entity. And I just have to say, I'm glad Marvin is back, and Marvin and I, over the years, we always had some disagreements. But I think Marvin's recommendation in terms of naming the auditorium is probably the closest thing that I would, would be most acceptable to most people. It shouldn't be named after anybody, it should have its own identity. So, Marvin, I think your recommendation, whatever that was, something like that, was very good. I have a couple of questions, based on what I saw over here, this is very interesting. I never saw anything like this, all these recommendations and voting it down and so on. How are you doing on the plaques for the high school? Is that all settled, done? Can somebody answer that?
At this point, we have, we have not settled on a plaque for the high school. And since we will not have one, if we just talked about it today, in time for the ribbon-cutting ceremony on September sixth, we decided to hold off on the discussion until the future.
I just want to say, Kathy, that you had all this time, the high school's been built for the last couple of years, and you wait until the last second, a couple of weeks, you'll be opening, and I don't know why this decision hasn't been made, but based on what I saw over here before, it will be a very interesting discussion in terms of how the plaques should look. I do have some recommendations, what I would like to see, and it's just my opinion. Number one, I believe that the, we should follow the precedent that we have throughout the district, the same setup. Number one, it should be the board that initially approved the high school, including the superintendent, Dr. Ferry, and Wayne Holiday, and the architect. That's the way it normally goes. That's number one. Number two, I think there should be a plaque for those board members, exactly the same setup, who approved the additional forty, forty-five million dollars that we needed to, to complete the, the high school. Thirdly, I don't care what the present board does, whether you want to put your names on a separate plaque or not, but I think those two boards should be, or two plaques should be separate. And the most important thing is, you cannot forget some form of recognition of the free holders. Now, I'm not saying list every one of them, but they're the ones who gave us the land, they're the ones who supported us all along, and either a statement or something has to be said about the free holders. If you recall, when we initially had those signs go up the high school, the, didn't have the names of the free holder, and I mentioned to Dr. Ferry, hey, we got the free holders, because I think the free holders were just as much part of this high school as everybody else. So, please remember, I don't care how you do it, but I think there should be some form of recognition of the free holders. And the other thing that I have is, I really believe that naming of the auditorium should go to a committee. It should be the Buildings and Grants Committee, and maybe they can come up with two or three different names, I don't know, whatever you want to do, and bring those names to the full board, instead of everybody trying to come up with some kind of a name. So, that's a recommendation that I have, that's the way it should be, and that's probably the proper way of going.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you have a question of me or none.
Do you have a question for Mr. Homoki?
I think that the late Freehold director, David Cravill, in the form of special recognition, he stood four-square all the way through, and I have one spot in my heart, David Cravill.
I think the decision not to name anything after anybody is good, and I have no reservation. If you want to just mention his name among the other, the way you set up the plaque or whatever you do, just a couple of sentences indicating the Freeholders of nineteen, whatever, did this, led by David Cravill, that would be. But I think you ought to consider recognizing the work of the Freeholders.
Thank you, Mr. Homoki.
Okay.
Shell Arminio, nine Nathaniel Street. A couple of things. One, were invitations sent out to people to go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony?
Yes.
How were those people selected?
The committee, there's a committee in place who came up with a list of names. I don't know what criteria they use, but the committee-
What committee would that be, that we can ask what the criteria-
There's a ribbon-cutting committee, it's made up of district employees, board members are represented, what else is on the composition of that committee? Are there parents on there? Kathy, Kathy?
I, I don't know. I, Mr. Masters and Ms. Antellas, was that the last?
No.
But there's a, there's a committee in place, and the committee's been meeting for a couple of months now.
Okay. So, is there any more room in the ribbon-cutting ceremony? Like, if people would like to come?
There's a general, there, there is a school story that's going out, there's a general invitation in there for the public. That actually, that school story actually was mailed today, so there's an announcement in there.
I absolutely object also to what Mr. Homoki said, with all due respect. It's very political to put a politician's name on a school. How about we put all the taxpayers' names that are footing the bill? Those are the people who are given, and the land was not given, it was gotten at great cost to the taxpayer, almost forty million dollars more, and I may be incorrect on that. But at great cost to the taxpayer, that land was not really provided. It, we had, we had to pay money to the green acres, it absolutely ruined green acres law regulations, the law was changed to accept that land diversion, so let's not get into that anymore. Delighted the kids have a new school, I was always in favor of a new school. A politician's name, and that includes a superintendent, with all due respect, does not belong. Taxpayers paid it. How about Monroe Township Community Arts Center? I mean, that seems like a decent thing. I, I think that's all, I mean, I just, I just think we have to be really sensitive, under especially these economic conditions, about putting appropriate consideration to the people who are really supporting it financially, not just politics. Because, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Homoki again, I did not say put Cravill's name on it, I just said the free holders should be recognized, because without them, we would never have the land nor the high school.
Anyone else from the public?
Barbara Dahl, fifteen Edward Avenue. I would just like to suggest, from one who takes a lot of the public's phone calls, that you add the high school name, like Monroe Township High School, because with two packed centers now, it's going to get very confusing for people. So, I think if you designate it specifically for the high school, they're going to get confused anyway, people, but at least it's more definitive. If you just say Monroe Township Performing Arts Center, they're going to say which one. At least, that's my guess, is what they're going to say, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Chrissy Skirby, eighth Seminole Court. I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the last board meeting. It's very disappointing that you're implementing the pay to participate program, and I'm very disappointed that the amendment got voted down tonight by Mr. Matt, when Mr. Masters presented. You know, the zero-period busing is a privilege to parents. You said that that costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget. That's a luxury for parents. You weren't taking away the program, the children were still allowed to participate in the program, parents had to drive their child to school. What you're doing with pay to participate is you're taking away the opportunity for students to participate based on cost. Somebody that has four children going to the high school, that all want to play two sports, it's a huge cost, that, you know, I understand Mr. Tesler said you could, you know, manage your budget better in a family, some people can't, and they might not be at the poverty level where they're going to get, you know, free, their child to go for free, so you're going to have children not being able to participate in programs. It's very disappointing. You could have eliminated pay to participate and held parents accountable to drive their children to a program.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, our next scheduled public Board of Education meeting will be held on Wednesday, September seventh, two thousand and seven, seven, two thousand and eleven, at seven o'clock PM at the new high school, which by then will be the high school. So, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Klein, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.